Okay, welcome to Monday.
Good morning. This is Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. So we have a Budget Management Review and we'll start off with Health and Human Services. And we have a slide. No, no slides. But do y'all have? Do you need? I didn't print because I thought we were gonna have them on our screens. Yes, reducing paper. So no, no sending them. Okay. So all of the financial information that we'll be presenting, it's dated January 16th, but it's for through the month of December. So it's for the fiscal year.
Year end.
Year end. And so I think starting in February, we'll start presenting for the month of January. So anything we present, I'll make sure you know that it's which calendar year it's for. But this is for 2024. And we'll start off with Veterans Relief Fund. So do you have it yet? Nope.
It's working its way through the circuits. Did you get this cold in Texas, Kathy?
Actually, last week, it was colder in Texas than it was here.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, very unusual weather.
There we go.
I don't know.
Yeah, climate change either way, right?
Either way. Okay, so on, no, that's the first one that you have, Kelly, is? Are there separate folders? Is that the first? I'll start with whichever one you wanna, oh, okay.
There's Veterans Relief.
There's Veterans, okay. So on Veterans Relief Fund, this is our revenue comparisons. Their primary revenue that they receive is part of the property tax revenue. So they have taxes budgeted at $218,835. And we've actually exceeded the budget for what we had estimated. So the actuals are $228,629,000. So we're almost about $10,000 over what we had budgeted. Intergovernmental is very minimal. Miscellaneous is basically investments on the funds that the Veterans Relief Fund has, is holding, and that was budgeted at $50,654. And the actuals were $42,0710. We're a little bit under budget, but I'm not entirely sure that all of our accruals have been recorded for the year. And then other financing sources is a decision was made that the administrative overhead associated with Veterans Relief would be billed back to the general fund, and that accrual hasn't been recorded yet. So that's, but that was budgeted at $36,481. So overall, their revenues should be at or exceeding budget overall for the Veterans Relief Fund.
Kathy?
Yes.
Could you, on the miscellaneous, you said those are investments or money that's being held?
Right, interest income, investment income on the balance being held by veterans.
Okay, and you said that we're under because we haven't received the interest accrued in the last, in that last quarter?
Last month. They're booked monthly, and so there'll be an accrual.
Okay.
So what do they have in that account now?
Well, according to this, we had budgeted that they would start the year at about $885,000 of fund balance. And at the end of the year, they would have a little over $1 million in fund balance. So they have a very healthy fund balance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and one thing I wanted to point out, I knew it was new this year to have the administrative expenses come from the general fund. That was an ask from the Advisory Board itself. The, you can see under the miscellaneous, the investments or the interest earned isn't enough to cover our administrative expenses, so we could consider using that to cover the administrative costs instead of the general fund. I just wanted to throw that out there as something I know the board will be looking at the general fund a little more closely this year, so that's one option to moving forward as well.
Yeah, and I would echo that too. If we can reduce the amount of expenses that we place on the general fund, that will help. And they have sufficient, and there's a history of them holding a balance in their fund balance accruing investment income.
I'd be all in favor of that.
Yeah, me too. Is that, is that balance, is there a reason that we would have such a surplus in that balance? Is there, is there a reason for it? Or can it, is it okay if it's around $400,000 or $500,000?
Yeah, it's, the assistance that's provided to veterans, it's really specific. And so it's just kind of reflective of the revenue has gone up over time, and the assistance that has been given out has not necessarily matched that. And so it has just accumulated over the last several years. So the group is looking at some different options if they want to look at different ways to try to get some, in addition to the monthly assistance amounts of veterans apply for assistance with food or emergency car repair, different things that they may need assistance with. So they're kind of looking at some different options for above and beyond our monthly assistance that's provided that might utilize some more of the funding.
I'm all in favor of the best possible assistance that we can give to our veterans. However, if the fund is growing faster than what is being used somewhere, there needs to be a lid to at least keep those expenses and costs in that fund and not supplementing it out of the general fund if we don't need to.
Yeah, it cannot be used any other way. And so that's, you know, another reason it's just, it's sitting here. Yeah, so it can't be used to shift over in other ways, but we could look at how we're supporting the administrative costs so we're not using general fund for this purpose if we don't want to.
I think it's a good idea to broaden the scope of the services that we're giving our veterans. And if they need more assistance, and if we're able to do it, I think it's a good idea to do so. So I'm glad to hear that they're doing that.
There's been some talk specifically from a previous commissioner about working with one of the national organizations to maybe leverage some of those. Have they, I haven't been to one of the meetings in a while. Have they had any discussions on that? Do you know, or?
I remember some, a little bit of that conversation, actually. Right before he left office, he called me and said, "Can you keep this on your radar?" That hasn't necessarily come up in the Advisory Board. And I know that there is some work with legal, I haven't connected with legal on that yet, to kind of know what the parameters would be around that. But that could be an option we look into, yeah. They were kind of looking at mini grants or different, some type of grant program that might help, like a veteran-serving organization if they had a bigger project they were working on that assists veterans.
Help leverage the funds into a bigger deal.
Yeah.
If possible.
Mm-hmm.
So when you look at their expenses, talking about their expenses, like we said, there's a little bit of administrative personnel that are on this fund, budgeted at $29,537. There are also services that were budgeted at $150,420. They've only spent $132,321. So they're well under budget, as well as their revenue is greater than their expenses right now. And I think, like Gina said, they've had pretty much a history of that being the case. And that's what's accumulated their fund balance.
Refresh me, Gina, but I think when they set that up, they were trying to cover costs that other organizations didn't cover. And that's kind of why it's pretty restrictive, because there's a lot of veteran services out there, and they were trying to fill gaps that weren't filled.
Yes, yeah, they do try to. I mean, there is quite a number of things that veterans could seek assistance for. We do fill a gap in terms of we are able to support death or burial expenses for veterans. And then you're kind of your typical food assistance. They did earlier this fall, increase the assistance limits. And, you know, so like the food, for example, they increased the amount that could be accessed. I think it's a two-month period to kind of match the increased cost of food and whatnot. So I do anticipate some of that going up because of those increased limits. So we may see some of higher expenditures because of that for this year.
And that's all I have for veterans. What do you, what do you have as the next one, Kelly?
Real quick, I do have a question, Gina, along with the veterans thing. Would you say that we have an equal amount of services for our veterans in our area that we do for homeless?
Yeah, there, it's an interesting question. There's quite a bit of service available. Whether veterans are comfortable connecting is one thing. But there are, there are some specific veteran housing resources. There's some specific veteran case management resources and specific sort of low-income assistance, like with food and whatnot. Of course, they're also able to access the other mainstream services, you know, that folks who aren't veterans can access, so they're able to access that as well. But there are some veteran-specific services that can only be provided for veterans.
Okay, so the next one is Fund 14001, which is our Human Services Department. And as I said, this is through December 31st, 2024, as far as the actuals go. On this fund, they have taxes is one of their largest revenue items. It is budgeted at $486,471. And again, we are above, our actuals have exceeded our budget by $21,596. Intergovernmental is the next largest budget item on revenue, and that was budgeted as an estimate. as an estimate at sixty-six thousand seventy dollars. This, the actuals are under budget right now, in the amount of thirty-two thousand, almost thirty-three thousand. It includes a, see, and here we go, acronyms, CDBG grant. And the grantor requires that all program income be used to offset reimbursement request. So the department has received more program income than expected. And so the department does have some additional grant accruals that are expected to be booked in this. But they'll be small, and so they don't expect to meet the budget for the intergovernmental revenues at this time. And I think it's offset by expenses, so while we may not receive the full grant revenue, we also will be, we're correspondingly under budget in expenses. They have goods and services of seventeen thousand nine hundred dollars budgeted. They've brought in thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five, so they're slightly under budget on goods and services. But the good news is that on miscellaneous, which is investment income, they're over budgeted by three thousand eight oh seven. So that's, that's the recap of the revenue budget versus actuals. On the expense side, like I said, they're under budget on their expenses overall. For this fund, they had personnel, which is their largest expense, budgeted at two hundred and thirty-four thousand five seventy-nine. They're under budgeted by almost thirty-one thousand. They're also, services is their next largest budget category. And that, they're under budgeted by thirty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. And then we had transfer budget, and I'm not sure that we're going to have any transfers on this account. We had estimated that, but they're not going to, they haven't booked any yet. And there's seven personnel that are assigned to this department, and we're currently, I don't think we have any openings. And they're partial, they're partial people.
Yeah.
Because they're also charged out to grants and other funds.
Yes, so that seven is not seven one full, you know, it's not seven full FTEs, it's partial positions. So like, for example, my position is half, half of this and half Health Department. Same with Carol, same with several other staff, so that seven counts those half positions, if that makes any sense.
They're housed in this department, but they may be expensed out to other grants and contracts and such.
So is the reason that we have the, the thirty-one thousand dollar difference in personnel because of those grants? And not budgeting for an open position?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we do the best we can at the beginning of the year, but then we bill actuals throughout the year. So, you know, the time we spend working in the programs that come out of this fund will vary from year to year. So like I said, we do the best we can at the beginning of the year to try to budget or estimate, and then at the end of the year, it's just our actual time.
Yep, and they, they have a number of grants that they allocate to, like, like, I think they, they're one of the departments that have determined that it's the most you can allocate on a time sheet is, what? Twenty, twenty or not, something like, there's a, there's a number, and they, they occasionally hit that max. So they're allocating over a lot of different programs, so it is, it is a difficult task to estimate exactly how much will come out of this fund versus the grants.
And these are all funds that come from the state of Washington?
Most, most of them, yes.
Yeah. The transfers, what do we use the?
I think this is, this is when they transfer to other accounts to help with cash flow or, or situations within their.
It's not like setting aside for something else, it's?
No.
It's between accounts, okay.
And then they just placed a budget there in case they needed it.
Got you, got you.
We'll move on to, the next one is Fund, which one do you have, Kelly and I? Okay, that's the one I have, fourteen one oh one is, is Human Services Department as well, but it's categorized for substance abuse. This is mostly intergovernmental is, is their largest budgeted item. And that is budgeted at two million three oh three seven seventy. They've brought in two million twenty-five thousand. The intergovernmental revenue is likely to be under budget for twenty twenty-four because it was an estimate. It's largely made up, like we were saying, cost reimbursement grant revenue. And so if our revenue is down, then our expenses will also be down, and they are. And so there's a correspondence there. Are there any questions on their revenue?
Just a clarification, the title is called Substance Abuse, but the, the grants that are in and out of this fund is primarily our Criminal Justice Treatment Account contract and our Developmental Disabilities contract with the state. So it's called Substance Abuse, but it's not really exactly reflective of the funds that come in and out of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the expense side, we have some personnel expenditures budgeted here. But by and far the largest expense is in the services area, which was budgeted at two million sixteen thousand fifty-three dollars. And so we're currently under budgeted in that line item by one hundred and eighty-three thousand six forty-eight. And as I said, that has to do with cost reimbursements. And this, this account also has a, has a fund balance, a slight fund balance of, that we're carrying, that we're estimating to be ending fund balance of six seventeen one thirty-eight.
I always look at these in my mind, it's like the state gives you a estimated line of credit to use, and you send in reimbursements and you use whatever you use, yeah.
Uh, could you explain, help me understand? We have personnel at one forty and actuals at one twenty-four, but down at the bottom, it says we have no personnel. Current year-to-date and prior year-to-date.
So we act, so the personnel are actually, like I said, they're, they're assigned to the other department, but they're utilized and billed out in various different departments across. So they don't have any specifically assigned personnel. These are the ones that are charged to this account based upon time and effort.
Does that happen in any other county departments or just in Health and Human Services?
Um, it, it happens also in the roads area, because they also have a large number of federal, as well as state grants, and they allocate their personnel. Those are the two, Health and Human Services and Roads are the two that have the majority of their personnel allocated out to different areas. Okay, then we'll move on if there's no other questions. To, one of, fourteen one oh two, and this is where our behavioral and mental health tax have been residing. And this is the, this is the sales tax that was finished, sunsetted in March of twenty twenty-four. So we had only a partial year of taxes that were collected, and that was seven, that's why budget was seven fifty-two four hundred, and the actuals were slightly above that at seven fifty-six five forty-six. And miscellaneous, we had budgeted three oh five three hundred. Um, I, I think part of that is billings that are, that have some personnel expenses possibly for, for the department, but I, it's also their investment income primarily, because they have been holding a very large fund balance, almost six million dollars. And so they've been earning interest on that. And we are utilizing that fund balance though for expenditures, because there's no longer any revenue coming in. We still have some ongoing expenses that have been allocated to this source.
This is the, this is the, the fund that, well, the biggest part of it goes to, doesn't it go to the county, the, the jail?
To the jail, yes.
Or operation, but then the second biggest part of it is, is drug court comes out, out of here, that's the one they referred to.
Yes. So those general fund departments bill this, this particular fund. And those expenses come through as transfers. And so they have, like I said, they have a small portion of administrative expense charged to their personnel. We budgeted eleven thousand two dollars, and they're a little bit under budgeted by two thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. Services, a small portion there, and that was, I think that was due to maybe a month or two of contracted services for some behavioral health individuals that were under a contract with the Sheriff's Department, and then we switched it to in-house personnel. So the transfers by and large represent our general fund departments that are billing the mental health tax. And the largest one being the jail. And so we budgeted two point eight million. We're currently sitting at about two point four million in expenses. But we still have departments that have not finished submitting their reimbursement request. So we anticipate that we will use some additional funds on that line, transfer line, before the end of the year is closed out. And then we're estimating that our ending fund balance for this will be a little over four million, which will be sufficient to cover expenses for the year twenty twenty-five and somewhat for twenty twenty-six.
And that's based on current expenditures, the way things sit?
Yes. And I think there's a mistake, this is seven personnel, but this, that was for the Human Services Department, so the personnel is not correct on the bottom of that, it just repeated what we previously showed on for Human Services Department. There are no true personnel assigned to this, other than the cost reimbursements.
So that number should be zero on this one also?
Yeah, it should be zero.
That being said, there are some county departments that have FTEs that are billed against this fund.
Yes.
It's just not reflected the same way.
I think if I remember correctly, it's, it might be about a total, grand total of, I don't know if it's eleven or fourteen. Yeah, so, that are, that are actually billing for reimbursement. Okay, are we ready to move on to Health Department? Health Department, their largest revenue for this department is in their intergovernmental, which is budgeted at two point four million dollars. They also receive licenses and permits, revenue that was budgeted at nine hundred and thirty thousand one twenty-five. So we're slightly under budget on that estimate, so we're under budgeted by forty-seven thousand. And then on the intergovernmental, we're under budgeted by about close to seventy-two thousand dollars. Goods and services, we're budgeted at seven fourteen five, six, I'm sorry, six seventeen five hundred. And we're over budgeted on that category by twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars. And miscellaneous is investment, primarily investment income, and we're a little short. We have eighty-two thousand budgeted there, and we're twelve thousand five hundred and sixty-seven under budget. But we haven't finished all of our accruals, so there may be one more month of investment income there. And other financing sources is related to the booking of a, a subscription-based information technology arrangements. That's a reversal from the prior year, so those accruals will be made soon. That will reflect, will change that number.
Kathy, is there a deadline as to when you get these accruals from different departments?
Most of the accruals are finalized in the month of February. And so they have a deadline to the departments to submit paperwork and things like that, February. And so we usually have most of the accruals all in by February that get backdated to the prior year. They continue to work on the financials in the next couple of months, so. That's all on revenue. Expenses for this department, by and large, the largest expense are their personnel. And that was budgeted at two point six million dollars. And we currently are under budgeted there by one hundred and seventy-two thousand. Below you'll see there's twenty-three FTEs that are assigned to this department, belong to this department. And at this point in time, we, at December, there was one vacancy that we had in the system that was reported. Supplies, they budgeted a hundred and eighteen thousand seven eighty-four, they were slightly over on this category by forty-eight thousand. And services though, correspondingly was under budget. They had budgeted eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, and they came in at seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. So the debt service and the capital again relate to transactions related to their subscription-based information technology arrangements. And those entries were booked, reversals were booked in this year. And the accruals haven't been booked for the current year yet. And they're estimating that they'll have an ending fund balance of about two point seven million dollars, two point six. But overall, they're under budget on their expenses for, for the Health Department. Which corresponds to being slightly under budget on their revenues. Okay, the next one is Fund eighteen four oh one. This is low-income housing. This one has a small amount of taxes that go into this, that are budgeted in this account. And they, we budgeted one hundred and seventy-one thousand six twelve. And we're slightly under budgeted by nine thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. Intergovernmental, we budgeted three million one hundred and ninety-one thousand nine oh eight. Actuals came in at two million one hundred and twenty-three thousand ninety-eight dollars. So we're largely under, under on our revenue estimate here. But this is made up of grant revenue, which is cost reimbursements. And we don't anticipate meeting budget. The department had fewer costs that were eligible for reimbursement. And so so we'll see on the expenditure side that we're also under budgeted on expenses. so we'll see on the expenditure side that we're also under budget on expenses. Goods and services, we're budgeted at five eighty-five, um, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. We actually received more in goods and services than what we budgeted. Uh, we're over by fifty-five thousand dollars there. And then miscellaneous is primarily investment income. And we are actually slightly under budget for that line item. And transfers, what we budgeted, actuals, um, meet, um, our budget. But this account has a lot of revenues that flow through, um, the account. And then we also during the, on the expenditure side, we actually, um, expended some, some of that fund balance that we brought forward. We had brought forward a little over four million dollars of fund balance. And we expended, um, some of that during the year. So I highlighted the two, uh, large, largest expenditures that happened to use, utilize fund balance. And that was seven hundred and twenty thousand that was funded at one-time lower Columbia cap, uh, to build new units of affordable housing. And then also there was a two million dollar, um, allocation for a one-time grant for the community house on Broadway. So even with those one-time expenses, we're still, um, under budget on our expenses. By a little, a little over three hundred, almost three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Is this the one Campus Towers and Sunrise would have come out of too?
Yeah, yes, this one has all of our document recording fees.
Yeah.
Our big contract with the state as well as the fourteen zero six Affordable and Supportive Housing Funds.
This Lower Columbia Cap, is that the, the Catlin project?
Yes, but I, they haven't billed us yet. So I think we may have, it may have been one of the other larger projects, um, that came out. We had a, a few this last year, so it could have been the Hawsway project, um, that was a larger that came out this past year.
Yeah, that almost sounds like the Sunrise Village project.
Yeah.
Because we gave them so much and then there was, like we talked about the other day, sixty that was set aside.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, so I think it was that project.
Okay, instead of the cap.
Instead of the cap project and, um, Community House on Broadway, that larger project.
Catlin Council's still trying to, they've gotten some more funding, but they still haven't reached everything they need yet.
Right.
At this point, we're just a commitment, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And I think that's where I got the number from, what was committed. Okay, and then, um, the last fund for human services is the opioid fund. It's nineteen three oh one. This is a fund where we're receiving, uh, disbursements from, um, settlements, litigation settlements, um, from various pharmacies, et cetera. And so for the year of twenty twenty-four, we received in total a little over two million dollars, two, two million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And some of these commitments go, when they started out, go as long as seventeen years. That we'll be receiving these funds, um, others were one-time funds that were deposited. I know that the original settlement, it's approximately, it's a little less than two hundred thousand, was the one that was spread over seventeen years. Two hundred thousand per year.
This one has like seven pages of things you can do with this. We haven't had a whole lot of, people ask for this at this point in time. We've kind of, just for information here, we've kind of looked at this because we have the possibility of, if we're able to develop a, a youth recovery mental center, you may be able to use a little bit of, some of this for, for that too. So we've kind of kept that in mind also.
Yeah, so on the expenses, when you look at the expenses, very little has been, um, charged to this fund. Um, the, the twenty-five thousand of actuals on services was actually a feasibility study looking at a facility, at the juvenile. And then most of the funds are held in, still in our fund balance. That's, we're estimating to end the year a little bit over two point six million dollars that we're holding on to for future expenditures. And there are no direct, uh, personnel allocated to this.
Do we know if all, all the cases have, have settled now? Do you?
We actually, Carol and I were just talking about this because we, it was coming really quick for a long time and it's kind of settled down. And then I think last week she saw a notice about another settlement, so, um, yeah, so we'll see. Um, it, it's on my radar, I think, maybe early spring to maybe schedule a workshop or something with the board so we can do kind of a, just a touch base, a bigger touch base about the funding, what it can be used for, just kind of an update and.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah, so the fir- first settlement was the drug manufacturers. Second settlement was several of the pharmacy-related entities, so. Yeah. And that, that's, that's it for, and then if Gina has some operational items she wants to cover.
I don't. Unless there's questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay then. Thanks. I had on here elections. Are you doing something with those two, Kathy, or not?
I think they were on there, but, um, they were, I, I don't know. I have their financials, but I don't know. I think they were removed.
Okay, that's fine.
And I, I defer, if Carolyn's not here, I'd rather do theirs when she's here.
Yeah. That's fine. Wow, we, we have about, we have a few minutes before ten for the next one to show up. Did you? We talked a little bit last week on, uh, this, uh, Department of Commerce assigning EDC as our designated AD, now I gotta remember what it is, ADO, Associate Development Organization. And, and I think last week, a little bit, we talked, we didn't really see any problem with this. It's, it's been what we have been doing. They, they redo it every two years. Okay.
Yep.
So we can, I would, then I'll ask the clerk to put it over to an agenda item so we get formal approval. Then, then they can, they can sign it and they can do what they need to do. Okay. Okay.
It was nice to see in that letter that they actually map out what all those acronyms stand for.
Yeah, I know. We get hooked on acronyms, don't we?
Man.
Exactly. You'd probably be a rich man. I know. I had the, and I, I just made a brief comment last week. I was looking through the executive orders from, uh, uh, the governor's office. And one that caught my eye was Executive Order Twenty-five dash O three, Improving Transparency and Building Efficiency in the State Permitting and Licensing Process. And basically what it talks about is having the, the departments report to him within so many days on, he's trying to develop timelines on when a license should be issued. Like I apply for it, I get everything in on such and such a date, I should have a license within how many days? And if you don't have it within those days, the fee you paid for that is reimbursed. And I really, I, I, I got some departments here that probably not like hearing this, but I kind of, kind of like having, uh, some accountability for, for making sure we're moving the process down, down the road.
What was it, like thirteen days, I think, for the permit?
Well, I, I think he was, he was asking then what's reasonable. He wanted within sixty days, a list of the, of the permits to his office and then what is reasonable. Once you have, like when they filled out and provided the information that, that it says they need to provide, what's reasonable to, for them to get a permit? And then he wants to put that into action. Okay, if you don't get it within such and such days, then you need to refund the, their permit fee.
Right.
And I think it just kind of adds, in my mind, it just adds some accountability that we keep the process moving forward. I probably got people on now that are.
I, I agree with the intent to try and make things accountable and move it forward and make it a more responsible process. But at the same time, what does it do to help affordable housing cost?
Well.
I don't see that as an outcome of that.
No.
But I do see the accountability side of it, of trying to make the permitting process move at a fixed pace. And, and basically you lose the revenue back to the customer if you don't do it in a certain amount of time.
Yeah, I think we're on the same page here. I don't know that it's going to fix affordable housing, but it does put some accountability that, that a consumer, when, when they've completed the stuff, that they should have some kind of deadline where they know that they're going to, going to get there. My guess is that our, most of the time, we're, we're really probably, probably pretty good about this. And I don't think it'll happen very often, but it just, does add a, a little bit of accountability and I'm kind of okay with accountability.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's good, if, especially if it, um, I don't like to use the word forces, but if it allows us the opportunity to see how we can streamline what we're doing to provide a better service to the citizen. Yeah.
But if, if, uh, you guys are in concurrence, I might rework this a little bit and then have our legal department look at it and, and get some input from, well, building and planning would be a big one, public works would be a big one, uh, human health services would be a, a big one. Get some input and just kind of move this forward. You guys good with that?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the, I thought as I read through that, one of the things that, that crossed my mind is, is, um, hopefully it takes into account the fact that we're different, we're, we're dealing with different counties and different needs and different, you know, different buildings and different structures and that kind of thing. What they want in King County is not going to be the same thing that we want, um, or might even be feasible on a, as, as far as a timeframe goes.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I can see, different counties would probably have different timeframes, right?
Yeah, so he's asking us what we want and then they're going to modify it and figure out what they're going to implement at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I definitely, I don't want to just assign, well, health, you're going to have it in two days. Well, that might, you know, I might get shot going home or something like that. But I think we can work with the departments, they come up with a reasonable timeframe and then at least we have some accountability to the, to our, our taxpayers.
I would even agree with the timeframe of two days if you're trying to approve plans for an outhouse, but it might be two months if you're trying to do an apartment building.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it give you a whole lot of heartburn? Am I scaring you here? Okay. Okay, good. Kelly, you got a couple of minutes? Did you want to cover these real quick? Oh, they're coming. They're going to be here at ten, okay. Eleven? I don't think I had. Unless you have any miscellaneous, we can, we can take a recess till, till ten, a small break.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll recess till ten. We're back for. The gender review, the ten o'clock, and see. Now you're back.
I'm back. Gina James, Health and Human Services. We have one item on the agenda for tomorrow. It's an amendment to our consolidated contract with the Washington State Department of Health. So this amendment is adding funding, um, in certain program areas. So it's, um, it's nothing new. It's sort of our typical what we see each year. So it's adding funding for emergency preparedness and response, um, which is to support some activities we participate in around planning, um, emergency preparedness planning. It's adding funding for Group B water systems. It supports our cost for permitting systems. Um, it also supports some water testing that we can make available. This allows us to keep our permit fee at zero for our customers. Um, so we're appreciative of this funding for that reason in particular. And then it's also adding, uh, public health services funding. This is the funding, it's sort of a bigger chunk that we receive that if we don't end up spending, we, you know, we send back what we don't spend at the end of the fiscal year. Um, this funding is what will support the contract, um, with Lower Columbia School Gardens. Um, that was approved recently with the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners. Um, so I'll just point that out. Um, so we have this on the agenda for tomorrow. I'm happy to answer any questions there might be.
This is kinda that, that sheet you showed us last week, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you kinda answered them last week for us.
Okay, okay, okay. I will be back tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay, back again. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. Um, we have on the agenda for tomorrow, um, a request to do a call for budget amendments, twenty twenty-five county budgets. Um, we would like to request permission to hold a public hearing on February. I think it's February twenty-fifth is what we've slated for a public hearing.
Kathy, did you say that's to make amendments to twenty twenty-five?
Yes, it'll be, uh, we typically do at least four amendments, um, time, quarterly amendments to the budget. Um, this is where we look at unanticipated revenues as well as unanticipated expenses. And we amend the budgets, um, through a formal process, a resolution to amend the budget. And we hold a public hearing to do that.
What date are you planning on for the public hearing?
Uh, we're planning the public hearing, we're requesting it to be February twenty-fifth at nine thirty a.m. And we will publicize in the newspaper for two weeks, um, the public hearing.
Okay. And we're doing it in February?
Kinda middle.
To March because.
Middle of the quarter, yeah.
Oh, we do it in the middle of the quarter?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we do that because the fourth quarter, you wanna.
Have time to.
Yeah, I wanna have time before the end of the year, so we'll probably do that one in November, li- either late November. And if we don't need to do one, we won't, we won't do one. But we put a call out to our departments, asking if they have anything that they've seen unanticipated, that they need to amend their budget. And it's up or down. Some budgets go down and we hope, hope, hope to have a corresponding. Down as well as an increase.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you.
Oh, Ian, I, I have you next. Yeah. Wherever you want.
You're fine.
Just do more, just make sure the mic's on and you're good.
Okay. Ah, so, um, pleasure to meet you in person. I, I think we have meetings set up later to get more acquainted. Um, but what I put on today's agenda is basically our standard, uh, conflict attorney contract. That we utilize at the Office of Public Defense when we have a conflict of interest. Uh, can't represent an individual charged with a felony. Uh, we are fortunate enough in our small legal community to have three people that are not, uh, within our office that still practice criminal defense. Uh, to a standard we're familiar with and, and, and recognizes the standard we would hold for our own attorneys for the county. And, uh, those three individuals are Ted Debray, Josh Goodday, and Dan Morgan. Um, so this contract is basically just to keep the, uh, longstanding bond we have with those three attorneys going. Um, so that when these conflicts arise, we can provide adequate, effective, uh, legal representation for individuals charged with felonies. So kinda the invisible hand of the market has set this as an agreeable rate of pay. Equals to about twelve hundred dollars per felony case. Uh, we just were able to compute our numbers from last year. All these attorneys did meet this quota. So, um, you see a grand total of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Um, there are cases that do come to us that require conflict counsel that fall outside of this contract. And in the past, we just negotiated those case by case. But this is basically the stopgap that provides us to month to month, uh, work. And, uh, satisfy the needs that are set forth by law enforcement and prosecutor's office.
Is this similar to the contract that we just, the contracts that we just had a while ago? Was that for people who didn't have representation? Is it similar to that, written the same way? It sounds very familiar.
That was the indigenous, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, I think you just, you sent us that, that's the contract we're talking about, right?
Correct, yeah.
You just sent it over to us earlier so we could get a chance to.
Okay.
That was my hope.
Say this is all sounding familiar, I thought.
Yeah, I think this was sent maybe last week or the week before.
Yeah.
Um, and just so I could clarify if there were questions about it or, or, um, give you any history that might be necessary about it. But we, we've, the, the attorneys listed are familiar with it, are basically already working under the, the premise that this is gonna continue. Uh, but I wanted to get it before, especially the new commissioners, uh, for any questions or anything. And then we'll put it on, I think, agenda next week for a request for approval.
When we, uh, when we, how did we arrive at that number? Do we just go based on history to, to come up with that? We may fall short of it, we may exceed it?
Yes.
Okay.
Basically, in short, yes. Um, the. We don't compare ourselves to Clark County, that larger need, they have a much larger, uh, tax pool. So their, their pay scale is much higher. So we're very lucky that we have still three people that haven't moved south and taken their business there. But yeah, the twelve hundred dollars is, it was a thousand dollars pre-pandemic. Uh, the pandemic presented a whole bunch of difficulties, so that inflation and other things. We, I think two years ago, raised it to twelve hundred dollars for, for felony case.
Oh, this is something we, we generate, it's not a mandate from the state that you have this. We've just recognized the need in our county and how, how, how many years, I'm assuming we've been doing this for quite a few years.
Since our inception, so, uh, we, yeah, the Public Defender's Office have been around for, uh.
And, and I see you pay. They accrue felony points and that's kinda based into the pay. How do we assign these? Are these, where do these felony points come from? I'm just.
So the actual weighted point that is determined by, uh, state legislature and, and the Washington State Bar Association. Um, I'm the one that, for the county assigns the cases based on what the charge is, um, what the expertise the case might require, who it's assigned to.
So the points come to us from legislature, you look at it and look at the case and say, okay, it's gonna be a, uh, uh, an item four, two, two felony equivalent.
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
Class A felonies, highest, that includes a murder case, first degree robbery, anything along those lines. Those are weighted anywhere from four to eight points.
And then we're paying them more for the more difficult or time-consuming ones and.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Goodday's contract is the only one of the three that contains that class A felony. If Mr. Morgan or Mr. Debray were to take a class A that, that is off contract and that's negotiated. Um, depending on what the case presents, either at an agreed hourly rate or just per case, we're, we're willing to make this.
And we would see that separate.
Yes.
Yeah. County may audit attorney's records. Have we ever, ever gone in and done anything?
We have not, knock on wood, we have not had cause to do that. Um, but we do still reserve the right to look into the, these three that we contract with, make sure they're, um. Satisfying, basically meeting, again, the requirement we hold for our own attorneys in our office. Um, Commissioner Mortensen actually, uh, added a little, two years ago, a little bit of language. We worked with, uh, the.
Oh, yeah, I recall that.
With, uh, these attorneys, just basically saying if, if, say a bar complaint was seen through and someone was unlicensed. We, we just have a, pretty much a, uh, strong clause to just stop giving them our business at that point and seek elsewhere. So that was missing before, but that's now a power we have. So it's a, it's a favorable contract for the county in that regard.
If, uh, attorney is assigned, they have to accrue a hundred and twenty, it looks like a hundred and twenty felony points to receive the full compensation. All, but it says if through no fault of the attorney, what would be an example of a no fault?
You know, if, if we were all fortunate and say there was just a, a mass decline in, in criminal activity and, um. And the charging went down and there weren't enough felony points, um, that would be a situation in which we couldn't meet the quota. That's never happened in the, in the time we've had this contract. And, and quite honestly, there's enough misdemeanor charges filed that I think we would still make up for any, uh, any. Numbers below the one twenty with other forms of work that they could take. They all do work in district court. Um, so we would, we would make sure we got our, our dollars worth.
But if they're just, for whatever reason, was not enough business, we'd still pay them what the contract was because we consider that it's not their fault.
Correct.
If we had a ton of business and they declined to do some stuff, then we wouldn't pay them.
That's correct, yes. Yeah, if they, if they opted to not follow the, the terms set forth, we would be able to, um, move away from the contract, yes.
And it says you guys are responsible for investigative services. What, what does that, just kinda give me a brief of what?
With the, we've talked about the changes in the standards for indigent defense across the state. Um, there are newfound and there's gonna even be increasing requirements for private investigators. Proof that for a given case, if a person asserts their innocence, that their case is being investigated to the same. With the same zealousness that somebody who hired an attorney, uh, would, would receive. So the investigative services go through simple, uh, investigative work, the hiring of experts. Uh, so if there is a case that involves DNA or, uh, a, a blood lab or anything like that. We also would then hire somebody at no. hire somebody at no expense to the defendant, uh, to thoroughly vet the evidence, so.
You, you'd provide the same stuff to them as you provide to your on-staff attorneys, what you're saying.
The bill is sent to us, yes. The county pays for that.
So, at, at minimum, what this is outlining is that this is what we're going to pay. Given, all things being equal, they accept the jobs, they do everything, we're, we're on the hook for the hundred and forty-four thousand per attorney.
Yes.
Okay. And then it, with what you just described, what you're saying is, is that we're now going to be providing services to those people who cannot afford to hire an attorney at the same level and scope of somebody who can.
Yes. Yes, that's the, the statewide, I mean, national wide standard for a public defender's offices regardless of your ability to hire an attorney, you get the same representation, uh, thorough investigation of your case. If you go to trial, you get the same level of representation at trial that you would if you had were fortunate enough to afford, you know, a, a big name attorney.
And are those things included in the, the amount of money that we have, or is that something separate that we would have to pay for?
That's all included in, in our budget. The Office of Public Defense's budget, yes, which again, not, I don't, I keep saying things to jinx myself, but we, we're usually very good with our budget. It can come well below what we said.
Yep.
Boy, these days, we might even have you next door.
Right, yeah.
How much suits running around here?
Yeah. I don't know if you're aware of that, but they're, they're trying to move our office just to the annex across the way, but we keep, uh, floods occur x-door, so it's, well, long delayed. That's been frustrating, but, um.
You're actually on agenda for tomorrow to get this.
Oh, is it tomorrow?
It's tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so. It's quicker than I thought.
Any other questions on this for Ian?
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, look forward to meeting you, I think, later this week.
Thank you.
Deborah.
Good morning. Deborah Gardner, County Treasurer. I have, uh, two consent items on the agenda for tomorrow. One of them is, um, we do this every year. The RCW states that, any uncollectible personal property taxes need to be presented to the board. Uh, and then they are removed from the roll. That is, um, RCW eighty-four fifty-six two forty, and that's one of the affidavits. So, this shows, uh, there are businesses that have closed, that are no longer there. There's, we, we've tried contacting them. We've tried to collect the taxes. And we haven't been able to, and the businesses are shut down. There are also, uh, mobile homes that have been destroyed or removed. So, there's really nothing that, and no further action that we could do to collect these taxes. So, we present them to the board on a yearly basis. We remove them from the roll, but if they, if we do still collect the taxes, we still, we have the ability to still collect the taxes on the roll. There, there.
We never, ever actually forgive it, right? I mean, at some point in time, if it comes in, we take it.
Randy Goslin, Chief Deputy. Uh, the, we write it off, we still have the ability, or we remove it from the roll, we still have the ability to collect it for four years. Then we file a petition with the Superior Court through the, uh, prosecuting attorney's office to have it actually, uh, removed, written off completely.
Okay. And that's four years later?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Four years after the date of the resolution.
Okay.
And what's the timeframe from the time they don't pay to the point that we get to where we're at now?
Just leave it on.
Well, you don't have to put it.
Okay.
Well, geez. Uh, so, the RCW that, uh, governs the write-off allows for, as soon as the assessor's office has del- essentially deleted the account, they've determined that either the manufactured home or mobile home doesn't exist anymore in Calitz County, or has been destroyed, or that the business has closed and we don't know the location of the personal property anymore. Then as soon as they delete that account, and it's considered uncollectible. Cause the RCW only allows, there's only so many way, re- so much recourse that we have to try and collect those things, and once the stuff has disappeared, we don't have a way to. So, then they can go immediately onto write-off on our list. We can, but, uh, the RCW says that we bring it to you in the first. So, we have some of these that are prob- were probably deleted a few months ago, where the assessor's office made the determination that the property is gone. Uh, and some of these were deleted beginning of last year.
So, the timeframe before the four-year timeframe starts, how much time from the taxes uncollected before that four, four-year timeframe starts?
So, the four-year timeframe starts the minute that you guys sign the resolution that allows us to remove it from the rolls.
How much time before we get to sign, what, to get to us to sign, is there a timeframe in between there that you haven't collected the taxes?
No, there is not a required timeframe. Like I just explained, as soon as the assessor's office has determined that the property no longer exists in Calitz County to be assessed, it's, the property is, or the taxes are considered uncollectible. So, it's just a matter of the business process. We do this once a year. So, this list could contain some that were, where the assessor's office made that determination at the beginning of last year. But there could be someone here that in October, the assessor's office made that determination that the property no longer exists.
So, let, let me try again. Failure to pay the taxes and how long before the assessor says it's gone?
Well, it kind of determines, um, how often, you know, they're out with the businesses. One of the things that my office has been working on, um, this year, really trying to contact these businesses that haven't been paying. And we've been working with the assessor's office. So, this, this year, there's been more throughout the year that we just, that's not there anymore, the business. And then the assessors will determine that that business has been closed down, it's no longer there, they delete it off the roll.
So, would it be possible for a business to operate for three years without paying any taxes? And then suddenly disappear, and a year later, the assessor's office says they're not there anymore? And now the four-year timeframe starts, so we're eight years into this?
Yes, that would technically be possible. The only recourse that the treasurer's office has to collect unpaid personal property taxes is one, to lean real property if it is in the name, the exact same name as the business assets are owned, which actually doesn't happen very often. Most people have some kind of LLC or something that they, they buy their business assets and, and, uh, short of leaning the real property, then we have, uh, the RCW allows for what's called a distraint, which is essentially a foreclosure action that could happen. Calitz County hasn't historically had an active distraint process set up. That would essentially mean going down, locking, recording a document, locking down a business, and either taking all of their stuff and selling it at auction at a later time, or selling it from the steps of their business. So, short of those two, taking those two actions, they, the taxes do remain on the rolls unpaid until such time as the assessor's office determines the business has left or the property is gone.
Okay. So, it's not a matter of delinquency of time, then? It's a, uh, the status of the, the business and/or the property that would throw it into this situation that we're in now?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay. If you don't have any further questions on that, that one, the other affidavit is, um, refunds that we've made throughout the year. So, each year, we create the tax roll. That's where we start with how much, uh, we're going to be collecting in, in levies. And throughout the year, uh, adjustments are made to the roll. They're either, um, seniors are applying for an exemption, and they qualify for the exemption, they get a refund. Corrections, you know, if someone brings something forward and there's a correction to the roll, whatever the reason is, um, the, the people that, um, dispute their value, and there's changes to that, and there's a issue, a refund issued. So, this, um, report shows, um, all the refunds, the reason for the refunds, and the amount of the refunds, and we present this to the board, um, at the same time every year per RCW.
So, do you have down there, cause I don't have it here, on, on both of them, what dollar amounts are we talking?
Uh, on the refunds, the total is, um, there's eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in refunds.
Covering both categories? Both, uh?
Uh, all types of refund.
Refunds and?
All types of refunds. Is, is that what we're just talking about refunds?
Yeah, I was just for this item one, item three, eight, eight forty-four covers for both item one and three, or just item three?
Just the, the refunds, the, um, the amount that's being written off in, um, personal property taxes is eighty-six thousand five hundred.
Eighty-six, okay. Thank you.
When, when we create the budget, Deborah, for this, do we allocate funds knowing that we're going to have historically X amount of refund?
No, actually, in the ref- in the levy process, you know, there's the, the levy that's, then you can, um, the districts and the for, the board can increase it by one percent.
Mm-hmm.
And new construction. One of the items that's allowed to be, um, to take into calculation on those levies is the refund. So, the assessor's office has a report that they do that will let the districts and the board know what the refunds were for the previous year. And that can be added, that could be one of the items that's added to the levy at the time for the next year.
Okay.
Because they, you know, if this would have all been done before the roll, this wouldn't have been included in the pre-, you know, but it, it's just the changes, but they, they, by law, they can be recouped in the next year.
And that doesn't go against the one percent increase if it was cho- okay.
No. All right, any further questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see anything else on our agenda. So. You know if everybody's here for the other? I see, I see Jennifer. Well, Jennifer does noxious weed. Okay, so, so we can, we can just proceed that and not wait till eleven? Why don't we do that? Well, first two I, I have on my deal are, are noxious, uh, mosquito control districts. Mosquitoes. Yeah, you can sit there and, and, uh, there should be a button that turns a little green light on if it's not over time.
Good morning, uh, Michael McKeck Foster, Program Manager for Calitz County mosquito control district. Can I answer any questions?
Well, maybe give, give us a little overview of what you, you, you have this board, and what, what do you want the board to do? What's the, the goal of the board?
The board is, uh, oversight and, um, management of, uh, my budget, sir.
Oh, of your budget, okay.
Um, I believe, Mr. Rader, you have a brother named Michael. He's been on my board for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, how many openings do we have right now?
We have no openings at the moment. Um, I believe you have two volunteers, though, uh, my, uh, your appointment, actually, Mr. Dahl. Um, that gentleman said he would be open to being replaced, but he's also fine with, uh, resigning as well. And then, um, Mr. Hellenberg.
Is that Paul?
Uh, no, that's, um, Rex Ogden. Uh, Paul is the Castle Rock appointee, so his city council appoints him. So, each of you have an appointee. Um, I believe, um, Mr. Farrell, your appointee is a lady named Claire Pang. Mr. Rader, yours is a gentleman named Andre Boyko. And then, Mr. Dahl, yours is Rex Ogden.
Okay, so this one I have here for Paul Hellenberg, actually, the city of Castle Rock will appoint him. We really have no.
Correct, sir.
To do with it?
Yeah. And then my other, uh, four board members are appointed by their respective cities as well, Kelso, Longview, um, Woodland, and Clama.
So, then I also have a new to the committee, a Mr. Shelton, city of Castle Rock, so I guess I'm assuming the city of Castle Rock will decide between these two?
Correct. Um, I mean, I can't speak for Paul, but he always says that he can't get anyone for his board. So, if he's got a replacement for himself, then more power to him.
Okay, so there's really nothing for us to do on this thing?
I guess not, sir. Um, but, uh, real quick, I just want to run down what we do. Um, the district was formed in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, I was four at the time and had just moved to this area, so I couldn't say what they were doing back then, but, uh, apparently the mosquito population was getting out of hand. And so, it was put to the voters to form a mosquito control district, and what we do is we go out into the wilderness and to private homes and do our best to make the mosquito population manageable and livable for the citizens of the entire county. Um, we do a lot of work out in the wilderness, but, you know, if you're a private citizen and wanted us to come to your home, we're certainly happy to do that.
Oh, okay.
And we just, we just do our best keeping the county mosquito free as possible.
Yeah, we've actually called you guys a couple of times and you've come out. It's great.
Yes, sir. We do a lot of drone work on that, um, piece of water by your property. So, Michael will always text me if you guys want to get ahold of us, so.
Yeah, you do a good job.
That's interesting. So, if the citizens of Calitz County have you available to help them.
Yes, correct, sir.
You'll, you'll do work for like the Forest Service or something if they?
Uh, no, yeah, we, we can't like ticket anyone or anything, um, much as I would like to. Uh, but, uh, no, if, if someone has like tires or something, we can educate the homeowner or, or talk to their neighbor for something if there's a mosquito issue in a neighborhood. Um, and then, uh, we do do adult aciding, which is actually going around and, and spraying for the adult mosquitoes. Um, that's a very small part of our program. Most of our program is, is killing the mosquito as larvae. It's a lot cheaper and easier um, when the mosquito larvae are trapped in the water. Um, so, yeah, we just, we have hundreds of sites that we know that breed mosquitoes throughout the whole county, and we, we go to them, we check them. Um, and then us and DHS HS are responsible for monitoring any mosquito-borne disease that could enter the county. Um, we're lucky to have managed to escape all of it so far, cause it does affect the eastern part of the states or the state, and, um, you know, that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah. So fundamentally, you're treating straight stationary water pools of water on private property?
Yes, sir, we, we do, we do that. Um, uh, private, public land, uh, we, we kind of do it all. It's all in the bag. And with the permission of the homeowner, though, we don't necessarily need to, need it, um, according to our RCW, which is seventeen twenty-eight, but, uh, we, we'd like to try and work with homeowner if possible.
Okay, I'm good. That's interesting to know.
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
Appreciate your time. Thanks for coming in.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, young lady. How you been? It's just the time of year you get to rel- Is this the time of year you get to relax a little bit?
No. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Mendoza, the Program Coordinator for the Noxious Weed Control Board. Um, today we're bringing, we have two board member positions that are expiring and I came to explain our, um, application and appointment process. Um, so our RCW is seventeen ten, it's the noxious weed laws. Uh, our county activated the Noxious Weed Control Board in nineteen seventy-four, so we've been around for quite some time. Um, we have a five-member volunteer board and those members are appointed from, uh, each of five areas within our county. Those areas were established by the Board of Commissioners. Uh, essentially we have each of our cities represented within each area and then additional land covering the whole county. The two positions that are up for expiration and appointment are the, essentially the Kelso area currently held by John Gross and then, uh, the Klamah area currently held by Betty Engelmann. Our RCW, uh, explains the process for appointment. Essentially, the weed board posts in advance that these positions are expiring and, uh, takes a call for applications. Uh, the weed board accepts those applications and, uh, holds a hearing to review them. So we held our hearing, I believe it was January eighth, uh, to consider all of the applications we received for both open positions. Uh, we received one application for each. However, if we did receive more applications, we would also forward those to the Commissioners. Uh, the RCW requests that the weed board makes a recommendation for the most qualified candidates and then makes a recommendation to our county commissioners, uh, for who they recommend appointing to the position. Uh, ultimately, when you receive our recommendation for appointment, uh, you could hypothetically, uh, appoint any of the applicants, uh, that are received. Um, however, we did only receive one for each area, so that limits the pool. Um, but it would be of best interest to also take the recommendation of the weed board because they've thoroughly vetted these candidates that they stand for the interests of our board, so.
If you had two for Klamah, we would see both of them, but you would say our recommendation is candidate A.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, and so some of the requirements in the weed law are that our members, three of the five members have to be involved in the primary production of agriculture because the weed law protects a lot of our agricultural producers throughout the county. And so, uh, each of our members is somehow involved in agriculture, which is, is really nice, but the requirement is that only three of them need be. Um, so today we have a recommendation for a noxious weed area number one. Uh, where our board recommends that John Gross continue to fill that position. And the second recommendation is for weed area number four. And our board recommends that Betty Engelmann continue to serve in that position. Um, John's been on our board since twenty thirteen. He currently serves as our chair. And Betty's been on our board since twenty twenty-one. And so this will be her second term. Our terms are for four years.
How often does your board meet? Do these people get?
We meet monthly. Uh, the RCW requires that we meet at least quarterly, but we do meet monthly. Any other questions? Okay.
We're all good with the recommendations?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last item I see is, uh, we, the sheriff was in and we talked about this contract. You were out and, and there was a request, I think Commissioner Farrell brought up a request to see if, go back to the Humane Society, whatever, down in Vancouver and, um, tell them if we wanted to keep our kennels at the, at the prison, would it change the cost or would they even consider it? And, and so they were going to do that. And our direction to them, I think, was instead of having them come back for a workshop, that they would do that. If they couldn't do that, then we'd take the contract we have. But I think we all felt like over this next year, we needed to figure something out. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So we expected to see him, we expect to see him in eleven?
Okay.
Well, then we can recess till eleven. Take a break.
Right, I'll come back, but that's okay. Well, it might be good to chat with him anyway and try.
Okay, we're back. Gentlemen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Lorraine with Prosecutor's Office. I requested this workshop late Friday because we've received an email from the Humane Society of Southwest Washington regarding the concerns that we've been discussing on the annual cost for the use of their services. I forwarded the email that we received to you gentlemen, as well as Ms. Grayson. I'm not certain whether you've all had an opportunity to read that, but there were some things that were of concern in regards to the January twenty-four email regarding the fees. We are not offering a per-animal fee to any contracted partner. And I know that was part of the request that the board asked the sheriff to inquire about. But then it goes further on. We wanted to know what the calculation was. How are we coming to this amount that the county is being asked to pay? Ms. Dennis informed the sheriff that through negotiations, we reduced the cost to one hundred and eleven thousand for the county with the understanding that we would serve as a centralized location for your community and that the jail model would cease to operate. That up until this point of that, those conversations, that's never really been the understanding of my office nor the sheriff. In fact, November twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four, there was an email exchange between Ms. Dennis and the sheriff that state that the proposed contract sets the service costs at one hundred and eleven thousand, which is the minimum we can accept in two thousand and twenty-five, given the fixed costs required to provide these services. I am confident you will be impressed by the quality of care and professionalism of our organization. She then further goes on, "I strongly encourage you to cease the jail shelter operations in two thousand and twenty-five." Clearly, there's a disconnect between what is now being quoted to us and what was originally being negotiated. In that November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four email, she's asking us to maybe cease the use of the jail program, but did not connect it to the reduction in a hundred to one hundred and eleven thousand. But as of Friday last week, it is now solely connected, is thoroughly connected to that reduction, which has not been the way negotiations have been ongoing. Furthermore, in the contract that was sent over, that was attached to that email on page five, she states clearly that, or it stated clearly, "The county jail facility shall cease all animal care and sheltering operations for the duration of this agreement." I bring all that to your attention because we're at a place where the board now needs to make a decision regarding its facilities because clearly we're dealing with someone who, or an organization that that is making it very clear that they're no longer going to hold up their November twenty-second recommendation for reduced costs to the services, but they're now going to attach to that recommendation a requirement of cessation of county facilities.
I think we kind of figured it was going to head that way. At first I didn't understand it because I was going, if we're going to pay him, if we have a set contract of one hundred and eleven thousand and we send them less animals, it's more for them. But then Commissioner Farrell pointed out, then they lose their, whatever they want to call it, rehoming fees or readoption fees or whatever it is, so.
Well, there's a trade-off. If they, if we eliminate the jail kennels and they take the animals, they've got the added cost of dealing with the animals until the owners pick them up. If the owners don't pick them up, they still have to deal with the animals. So they're looking at a trade-off. On the other side of it, I would, I would think there's a benefit to us to be assisting the local homeowners to get their animals back and minimize the cost to the Humane Society in the long run. Any animals, I guess, that don't get claimed, we could, the jail could move to their facilities, but I guess it sounds like they've moved in a direction that, like, yeah, I kind of anticipated that that might go there. My first gut instinct is to say respond by striking that section of the contract out of it and send it back to them. We're not going to eliminate the jail facilities. And is that one hundred and eleven thousand dollars the cost that they're going to stand by with that understanding or not?
That's a good question, Commissioner Farrell. In emails that, I think in that same email from Friday, she's very clear that if we don't cease the use of the jail facility, then the cost of the county is going to be one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which is, runs completely contrary to her November twenty-second email, which states, "We strongly suggest you end the use of the jail facility," but it wasn't attached to the one hundred and eleven thousand dollar fee reduction. So that, I bring this up because I, I know that Commissioner Dahl and I had a conversation last time we, we were here, that what's it going to look like in two thousand and twenty-six? What's it's going to look like in two thousand and twenty-seven? And if the target is being moved within a month, two months, what's two years down the road going to look like? What's that target going to, where is it going to be positioned? What other expectations or other demands are going to be made of the county? You know? The, so those are concerns that I bring to the board because it's your decision based on the simple fact, it's county facilities that they're asking us to do away with to have, to use their services. The jail facility is a, a, my understanding, it's basically a seventy-two hour hold for animals that aren't that we know are going to be, we know who the owners are, potentially have a good understanding who the owners are. And it does, as you brought up, Commissioner Farrell, reduce the cost to those members of the community. But you know, there are trade-offs to be, to be said about having a sole centralized provider for these services. It's just the demands and that have been made throughout this negotiation process don't seem clear from, from the outset.
Well, it feels like they're trying to hold us hostage because they know we don't have another alternative right at the minute. And this is for a one-year contract?
It is for two thousand and twenty-five.
Well, I think we previously discussed that if we were going to do it, we would do it with the notion that we're going to be being proactive with developing our own program or going elsewhere after this contract was up. Because we currently, we don't have the capacity to just take this over right now on our own, do we?
The only facility that we do have is the one that's at the jail. We don't have anywhere else to, to take any animals.
I think some of the concerns that were voiced to me by the sheriff in, in this are what about adoptions? What about fostering? Nothing in the seizure statute requires the county to foster or adopt out animals that have been seized.
Well, I'm with you on the, the moving target thing. I don't, I don't feel that they're going to be, I feel they're going to be consistent with their negotiating tactics moving forward on any renewal of any contracts. And it's constantly going to be a moving target. That's what my gut tells me. And it also tells me that the one hundred and eleven thousand is an introductory rate, rate, you know, to get us in the door and then change it on us next year.
And, and I, to that end, I think that's what that November twenty-second email really suggests. It wasn't, the one hundred and eleven thousand rate is, is contingent on the end of jail facilities. It was, you get the one hundred and eleven thousand dollar rate and we hope that you, we strongly suggest that you halt the use of, of those facilities. Now it is absolutely contingent, or from the twenty-fourth, it's absolutely contingent on halting the use of facilities.
Okay, well, I guess my gut instinct is to say, is to give them an alternative offer, tell them that we're going to maintain the jail facilities with a seventy-two hour hold policy. And if they want the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, make a fixed contract for that cost for five years with no further negotiations optional between now and two thousand and thirty. Like, that's my gut instinct, but.
Is the hundred, their original offer, is that in the ballpark? I mean, is that something that we would say is a reasonable price for the services that they're going to be offering? I'm assuming no, because we went back and said, hey, we're not going to do that.
If I remember the numbers right, and I think we talked about it a couple of meetings ago, maybe the service that they had, did provide prior to Calumine Society leaving. And then what we paid in fees this year, this was almost three times as much, I believe, of what we sent to Humane Society, that one hundred and eleven animals that we sent to Humane Society in two thousand and twenty-four. This was a significant jump from, from that amount. But we were also using the jail kennel where we, I think intake was around four hundred and fifty total animals. One hundred and eleven those going to the Humane Society.
So you say, actually, you sent to Humane Society about one hundred and eleven, but the intake was four hundred?
Yeah, I believe four twenty to four fifty is how many we actually took in over the, over two thousand and twenty-four. So the majority of the animals that went to the kennel were, were returned.
Yeah. So if a hundred and seventy thousand, if the four hundred to four twenty-five animals stayed consistent, that's four hundred per animal. That's actually a decent deal compared to what they're charging the people down there. But I don't know if they'd agree to it for five years.
Okay, like go for three?
Well, they're charging anywhere from figures I saw upwards seven to nine hundred bucks per animal for down there. Figure as I saw upwards, seven to nine hundred bucks per animal for down there.
I agree with you, Commissioner Farrell, that the, if we can lock in a longer term contract. That would be beneficial for us, but just based on their behavior, I don't know that they're going to do that.
So. I know that we discussed what. Their intentions were as set out in that September five article from the Colombian. Of increasing their costs. I was just reminded. By Chief Spencer that it was around six hundred and fifty eight. Per animal that they want to grow to, maybe a little more. So remaining at three hundred obviously would be really beneficial if six hundred and fifty eight is, is. The horizon.
Yeah, and at one seventy, if we did turn in four hundred and twenty five animals, that's four hundred bucks per. Per animal. So if you had that locked in for three years, we, I think that'd be pretty reasonable. I don't know. I, I agree with Commissioner Rader. I don't think they're going to want to do that, but.
Well, one of the other things that bothered the hell out of me on this article from the Colombian. Was the neutering and release of feral cats. Why would you release a feral cat back into society? Why would you even spend the money to neuter it?
Well. I know that there is an, an actual ecological purpose for having feral cats released back into society is the reduction of rat population. That is the theory behind that, but legally, I, I don't have any, any. Dog in that fight, but, but. You asked the question, I'll answer.
Kill rats?
What's that?
Do possum kill rats?
I, I think there are many animals that kill rats, but feral, feral cats do, do provide that service. Is, is it something that we need to pay for? That's the question that you really are getting at, I believe, Commissioner Farrell, and I don't have that answer. That's. One for your body to, to answer.
See, the longer you provide that service, I've gone out in the alley and watched him throwing poison into the sewer system to kill the rats myself. Talked to him about it several times, so I don't see the need for the feral cats.
Well, we haven't received an invoice from the feral cats for that service yet, right? So we're, we're good.
The other, the other thing that. Part of this new contract, it's written in there, is language that we're also paying for. Small county deliveries of animals versus the big C county delivery of animals. So anyone. Any citizen that feels that they can't handle their dog or their, or their cat. Big C County is being asked to take and pay for that by. By signing this contract. And I'm not certain whether. This board or the big C county, that is a responsibility they want to take on. Financially, so.
So if a homeowner. Can't take care of the animal anymore and they voluntary turn it in, we, that's extra?
I believe that's written into the contract.
And we pay that for the whole county, no matter if it happens in Woodland or what happens in Clymer or Longview?
I believe that's written in the contract.
So if the homeowner brings it in and pays a, pays the, an adoption fee or whatever when they drop the animal off. Does that? What's the word I want? For us paying that cost or do we get that cost also?
I don't know that they're being asked to pay an adoption fee by dropping off an animal. What I do know is that we're going to be charged for that. We are being charged, the county. Is being, is asked to, to cover the expenses of that animal. For, for the Humane Society by how the terms of this contract is written. There are a number of, number of places within the contract that that's written into.
I know recently I had a. A daughter who didn't take care of a dog and it, under the circumstances, I took the dog to the pound and I paid. A considerable amount of money for them to take care of the animal. And I, I think I had to pay the, the neutering fee and a pre adoption fee and a food fee. For them to take the animal, assuming that it would get adopted. And. I guess I'm, it just blows my mind that on top of that, they would be able to charge the county if that was still going on as part of their. Policy and procedures. So with the contract, if we're going to pay that fee per animal, would the contract exclude them from being able to collect that from? Somebody dropping an animal off also?
We can ask for those terms if that's what you would like. If we're paying for. Should the, should the citizen pay for it?
Or vice versa, if the citizen's paying for it, we shouldn't be.
That actually brings up a.
I must be a little sensitive right now.
We gotta get that shoulder fixed.
Oh, my God.
This is, no, I, I, I agree with you. There, it feels like they, they. Kind of know we, they have us under a time crunch here and they're just squeezing, squeezing and I, and I'm not enjoying it or I'm not appreciating it.
I really like the PR side of it for the. Being able to get the animals back to the homeowners within a three day timeframe at no cost to the homeowner, minimal cost to the county. I think that the public relations side of that is priceless. I hate to give that up. Because we got. Somebody holding a gun to our head.
Well, what if we? What if we agreed to? No longer using the, the kennels. Get the first year for the hundred and eleven and then ask for the previous, the, the remainder of a five year contract at the one seventy five. If we're gonna, if we're gonna go ahead and go with them all the way, get the first year for, you know, for the concession that they made. And see if they'll extend, if guarantee that the contract at whatever one seventy five is for three years, get as close to five as we can. But at least we take advantage of the one, of the hundred and eleven thousand offer they made.
Just as an update too, for the other cities, I know the city of Longview has entered into a contract. With Humane Society Southwest Washington and is no longer using the, the temporary facility at the jail. However, Kelso, city of Kelso is still. Unknown, they're still in negotiations with the same group. They're not happy with the amount that they were quoted. And I think their. Their hope may be to continue to use the, the temporary facility and that may affect them if we have to. Shut it down completely as well. And I don't, I don't know yet. That's just a speculation that I know that they're continuing to, to, to deal with that issue and.
Can you share what the terms of Longview's agreement was?
It was. Close to fifty three thousand dollars. Or, or not Longview, Longview was. It was, it was more than the county, but I don't have those specific terms.
Say they probably have. More animals they deal with than we probably maybe do in the county.
I would think they've got a lot more animals to deal with than that we would have from the county.
And I apologize, the fifty three thousand dollars, Commissioner Farrell, was for Kelso, city of Kelso. But yes, they, it was. It was, it was a, it was an amount greater than, than the amount that is being requested of, of the county generally.
I know for me, you know, if I look at it, I, I think the question that we have to ask ourselves is. Do we want to utilize their service? And if so, then we need to come up with terms that are going to, that we're all going to be comfortable with. If not. Then do the one year contract and let's come up with a, a different idea later on. You know, how, do we want to use them long term? Yes or no, I think is what the question for me is.
I don't know that we have an option not to use their services at all.
I know.
It'd take a lot of.
Resources and time and energy. I think whatever we do, we should take advantage of that concession because I don't know that it's going to last.
Well, I guess. I can't argue with your logic. If we go after the first year for the hundred and eleven thousand dollars in agreement to shut down the kennels at the. Jail. And then go after at least a three year contract. With a. Provision that says that we have the right to opt out at any time if we find a cheaper provider. Because if they're not willing to commit. To locking in that fee so that we know what we're looking at for a longer term than just one year. And somewhere, somehow, I guess, I think we need to be really aggressive at trying to find somebody to take their place.
I know that in sitting in, excuse me, on the presentation that they provided to Clark County. Board of Commissioners, that there. They presented that number that six hundred and forty eight was what it costs them generally per animal for the services that they provide for that animal when it's, when it's in their care and. And right now, currently, they were using. Donations or donor funded to supplement that cost and they're, they're trying to get closer, I believe, to that six hundred and forty eight. Per animal, so it's not subsidized by donor costs. That's where that six forty eight came from. That's how they presented is, that's what it costs us to deal with this animal individually.
And if I remember, I didn't say that they were, they were looking at increasing costs almost ninety percent in, in some areas.
I believe their presentation was. Four something to five forty to six forty eight, I believe, is what.
I think it was the interview with this, with the lady that she said that they were looking at increasing costs ninety percent to the paper.
You're correct. The, the September fifth Colombian article. Did suggest those increases of that magnitude.
Well, based on the article that was in the Colombian that we had copies of last time we discussed this. I broke down the numbers that they used. In that article. And then the twenty twenty. Three cost was two seventy nine seventeen per animal. And then on the increased number of animals that they put in there per year for the following years, it went for. Twenty twenty five was four sixty three seventy five, twenty twenty six was five twenty six twenty three, and by twenty twenty seven, it's six hundred and thirty dollars an animal. So it basically doubled in three years. For what the information was that was in the Colombian. And I, I can see, I can just guess that that's what we'll be looking at.
Do we know if they have any long term contracts with anybody else? Are they all on an annual renewable?
It appears the Clark County contract was signed from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty seven. I'm basing that on what Ms. Dennis provided, the, the sheriff last Friday. Which was an answer to his question regarding. Animal per, per animal basis, and he was under the understanding. Having conversations with. His counterparts that it was per animal. So.
What, do you know if it was based on these numbers that were in the Colombian? Is that basically what they signed?
I don't have that information right now because this was on Friday. When we received this responsive email, we can make a request to get that contract and review that. But. My main goal was. To have this board advised of. The information that was provided to us. On Friday so that a conversation can be had. Because I, I felt it was important based on the contradictions. Between the November twenty second and the January twenty fourth emails, how, how things have changed so drastically in, in two months.
Which is really another reason why I think a long term contract that we go through and make sure is. That they're not going to be able to change anything on us would be who of us? Because it, based on their history, they, they make changes. You know, whenever they want. And for planning purposes, I think it's better off that we, we know what to expect. Three to five years down the road when it comes to budgeting and what the contract says.
So for, for clarification, if we have these conversations with Ms. Dennis. Long term. Shorter amount?
I'm for three to five years.
Yes, to halting the jail or, or not, I. I, I want to remove my personal concern with that and have the board make their determination on what they, what you see said.
But if I, I'll just give you some stuff and then we can adjust it from there. Hundred, yes, all services at the jail. First year a hundred and eleven. Second year, we go to the. The one seventy they specify. And if we could get. Either three to five years, and I don't mind cost of living escalation on the one seventy. But I think it has to be inclusive of all animals, this extra cost for somebody bringing in. That I struggle with that. If we, at our four twenty five, if we are at their six hundred plus, that's, we're talking a contract two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So I, I agree with both of you. If we can tie up, even though it'll be a little higher. And at least we'll have some.
Stability.
We'll have some stability. We'll know what we're looking at down the way.
And do we need to? Do we need to know how it's going to impact or could possibly impact Kelso's agreement with them?
Good question.
Well. My understanding of what's happening with Kelso is pound sand. They're not going to come to the, the numbers that Kelso is able to meet. And so financially, they can't meet what the Humane Society requests of them. They are. At this point reliant on the jail facility. So there, there will be an impact, but. You know, that's unfortunate, but we're, we're big C county and we need to. Make a decision that's based on all citizens in all contracts. So. If that's what the intention is, is to end. The jail facility, there is going to be an impact on, on Kelso.
So I guess I, I would need clarification as to just, just based on terminology. Does, when we say end the, the jail facility, end the county's use of the jail facility? Because I don't think they can tell us that we have to get rid of it and that one of our municipalities can't use it. Right? So as long as the county doesn't use it, can Kelso continue to use it for their own purposes? Because they have. So as long as the county doesn't use it, can Kelso continue to use it for their own purposes? Cause they have money in it also, right?
So I'm laughing right now. Because I know that we're probably being watched and observed because it's an open court or open proceedings. And we'll receive an email telling us that now it's no longer just the county that has to end. Or halt the use of facilities, but it's all municipalities within the county that has to halt the use of faci- facilities.
So.
Even even though Kelso did pay in. To for and the the did contribute thirty-five hundred dollars for the. Structures that are currently housed at a county facility.
Say that again, Kelso what?
Kelso contributed thirty-five hundred dollars uh for the construction of the structure. That is currently at a county facility, the jail.
Okay, so if we move forward with this and eliminate those facilities. And if Kelso Kelso has no contract with them and Longview and the county does. Would they turn away animals that somebody from living in Kelso brought to them?
Being that it's within Calhoun County?
Well, then Calhoun County is paying for those animals. Calhoun County, Big C is paying for those animals.
And that would increase the number of animals that they would take in overall.
And and which would increase the number of animals that would then be used to justify the increased costs is.
Yeah.
It 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 makes you what? And I'm just.
You don't wanna make what it makes me want.
Well, based on a little bit we gave you can you you think you can you go back and see if you can get a little bit?
Is it the one clarification I wanted to have from you, Commissioner Dahl, is the inclusive of all animals when I when. When.
I'm I'm trying to get away from this fee if an owner that Commissioner Farrell talked about, if the owner turns it in. That we're also get a fee, I think they should just take the animals, take the animals.
So. In other words, you want the can- Big C County to pay for. Citizens who can no longer handle their animals to drop off the animals at Humane Society. Cause right now, it seems like the contract should be written for any any animal that is brought by the county under the. Animal Control Authority. That's been seized by the Animal Control Authority and that that should be the function of this contract. But if you're saying as they want, as the Humane Society wants. The county to pay for all animals that are delivered by citizens of the county, including. Those that are delivered by the Animal Control Authority.
What didn't you say that was written in here several times that we would pick up that cost?
Well, um it states that and and.
Should have to pick up that cost.
You don't want to pick up that cost, okay, that that's the clarification that I wanted, not. Yeah, there are several place, there are several places within there that that's the obligation of the county.
You should, yeah.
Okay.
Cause that could be a real, to me, that could be a real wild card, we could see some. Bills and I don't know what they. What rate they would charges for them and whatnot, so.
What kind of documentation do we get back on how they account for their animals?
Yeah, when our animal control brings an animal in, there there's been a o- over last year, there's been an intake form showing that we've. And that's what they use for billing, so there's an intake saying that we're we're dropping that off. Uh I don't know if there's something they're gonna follow up as far as. You know, we spay or neutered this or we provided vet care for this or anything like that. I believe it says after seventy-two hours it be- becomes the responsibility of the Humane Society. No longer ours. It does say in uh as far as. Animal and think that the society should accept animals on behalf of the uh animal control. Uh the sheriff's office and members of the public who find strays within the Calhoun County limits is what it says right now.
Okay, as long as that's all under that hundred and eleven. Thousand.
Yeah, I I believe then that hundred and eleven is inclusive of citizen drop offs.
Okay.
But again, we may get an email later on today or tomorrow stating, oh, that's not inclusive of the citizen drop offs.
So I I just try to summarize what we're asking, we'll accept that contract and we'll accept. Not using the facility, but we'd like some additional years to give us some s- stability.
Three to five years and. With a hundred and eleven at the first year with a hundred and seventy to top out for the year two and three.
Well, two and and I I get there could be inflation, so if you want to.
With.
CPI index.
A cola.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's probably reasonable. Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay, well, cross our fingers and go from there.
Thanks, guys.
Appreciate your time and your work on it.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
You know, everybody has a heart for animals, so you want them taken care of, so it's a difficult.
Animals will be held for a mandated seventy-two hour stray old period?
I just, it's it's a little bit. Difficult for me, cause I I thought I I believe that our people have done a great job with these and and. So now I I'm I'm in the point where now I gotta get comfortable with somebody else. You know, taking care of the animals.
Who becomes the county designated animal control agent?
Uh that's uh right over here.
Tag, you're it, huh?
I did just think of something real quick. With these additional charges that we may incur for the reasons stated, is there a way to audit that? And not to say that this would happen, but I've gone over, you know, I've been in the hospital and. I've uh looked at what was being billed to my insurance and I'm like, I didn't, that wasn't given to me, I didn't have that. Is there a way to audit that just to make sure that the cost that we're being charged for that additional charge is is verified?
So within the contract itself, there are obligations of the society to provide. Uh documentation of of the costs incurred um and for the services provided. There, I believe there's a monthly, a quarterly. Provision of those documents and meetings with ACA. Um the Animal Control Authority, which is the sheriff. At which time I. Imagine the sheriff will provide through workshops with this body to. Exactly what's transpired. I'm sure if you want a more stringent audit, we you could. Concoct something, but give a read on that email that was forwarded on Friday that the contract is there, so you can review it. It's not a great contract, but the terms are are out there.
Yeah, my only concern is, you know, a situation where we have other contracts with other entities, they have to come in if they want to make an amendment to that contract and charge more money. In this scenario, I didn't read anywhere where it says that they have to get that approved, they just do it and then we get the the bill.
Well, if you want to. Auditing versus approval are two different. Issues in my mind, when I when I hear audit, Commissioner Rader, I hear. We're going to account for what we've done. You know, giving approval means we're going to come to the board each and every time we do something before we do it. So which is it that you want performed?
Well, I I I bring it up only because I would like to audit the. What we're being charged and if there's any way to make sure that, yeah, this was done. Uh but the other thing is, like I'm saying, there's no, there's nothing in here that I that I saw anyway, just in in going over it that says. Okay, we're we're at a hundred thousand dollars in extra, you know, an extra money now for these extra, the services that we've provided. Is there anything that says at some point, okay, well, that we're, we do we have any any say or voice in that? Within the 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 contract that says we're at a hundred and eleven thousand dollars is what we're gonna pay per animal, but these additional services. That we've discussed may cost more and okay, now we're at a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in the first year because of the additional services. Is there anything that says, does that make sense? Am I making my question clear here?
Well, the contract. I believe it can be written or it's a hundred and eleven thousand and anything over you deal with, we don't.
Yeah, that's that's exactly what I'm asking right there.
Okay.
I- if we can have language of that sort, only because the concession was made and. Who's to say that that concession isn't made up with additional services throughout the year?
Any other, any other concerns that we need to bring to them?
I would just say I hope that the relationship works out and we have a a good working relationship with them moving forward and we can address the issues that we need.
We have everything now, are are we satisfied? Well. To some extent.
We got a direction anyway.
Yeah. I like direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yeah. May the force be with you. Anything else today? Think we're good, we're set for tomorrow? All right, we will adjourn, thank you.